That's where funds pay the general fund. Right now, the Water and Sewer Fund, the Sanitation Fund, which is a garbage collection fund, and the commuter parking lot all pay the general fund their share of administrative expenses. As you recall, the Finance Department accesses the central switchboard. There are people within the City Hall who do a lot of administrative duties that serve those funds, like sell the permits for the commuter lot, things like that, answer the garbage calls, process those invoices. So, the general fund gets reimbursed. We also have $50,000 coming from the special service area funds, and that's been true last year and the current year that we're in and now this next year that we're proposing because the engineering for all the special service areas is being done in-house by a gentleman named Dave Graff. So, because he's doing that, we are reimbursing the general fund for part of his salary. The transfers out are basically two, I have a slide on this, but I'll tell you what they are. General fund pays for the equipment that needs to be replaced in general fund departments. It also pays for 100% for any of the information technology needs that the city has. So, we're talking about computer replacement, software replacement, talking about maintenance services for software and for the actual hardware that we use, for the T1 lines, for the transmission lines, for the trucks, for the cars, for the office equipment, all of that goes through the equipment replacement fund, but the general fund pays for it. So, that's the 550,000 going out, and we end up with this deficit at this point of 473,000. At the bottom of the general fund summary sheets, I believe I printed them out so you could see what the state recommends the ending fund balance to be, they recommend seven to eight months as appropriate, and this would bring us down to about 9.2 months. So, it's not terribly dangerous, but you'd never want to wait for a situation where your fund balance is so low you might not be able to make payroll. And the reason why that could happen is because, remember that 36% of taxes that's coming in, that's a big part of what Wooddale uses. And if the state were to slow down or decide not to pay for some reason, or not be able to pay for a few months, or if property taxes got slowed down so that the payments didn't come in, then the city wouldn't have enough cash on hand. That's why everybody should have a reserve. So, Wooddale's done a good job of building up the reserves, but you notice here, if we had the deficit stay, we'd be dipping down below the 12 months. We were at 12 months at the end of April 30 of '07, and that's really where we want to be, one full year. Then we're not subject to the whim of economic downturns, problems with the state, problems with the county. Okay. The property tax rate, and I've gone through this with you when we did the tax levy, we basically think it'll be around 3.35745, which is just a little bit lower than last year. That rate will be finalized sometime in March or April when the county notifies us of the total levy. This budget shows a decrease of 2% in revenues. Most of those revenue decreases are due to two things. We're not going to have the building permit revenue that we saw in the last couple of years because not only is there an economic slowdown, but Wooddale is essentially built out. We also have some problems with our sales taxes. They are beginning to slow more, and I did talk with you briefly about business licenses and gave you a handout on Monday. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. It's all coming together to make for lower revenues. The good news is that we have better investment income because we have better arrangements with our banks, so we're trying to offset that as best we can. The expenditures increased in this budget by about 8%. I'm hoping to get that down a little lower, but part of it is that early retirement incentive that the council voted for several years ago. You know, I budgeted for it in '06, '07, and I started to budget for it again in '07, '08, and then was told by IMRF that they weren't going to send us a separate bill, they were going to reflect it in our rates. So, that's what they've done. So, for two years, we thought this was coming, and finally now the actuary has begun to reflect about $120,000 a year of additional IMRF costs that we have to pay to pay for that early retirement incentive. That's going to go on for a period of seven years unless the council does some kind of borrowing and pays it off early. But in that case, I think even if it got paid off this year, we'd probably still have that higher rate for one more year before they'd catch up on their actuarial valuations and say, "Okay, Wooddale's clear on this, and now we'll go back to regular business." So, we kind of have a confluence of items here that really are whacking this budget. We have the first full year of local 150 salary increases, and that includes a lot of stipends that we never thought were going to happen in the bargaining unit. This budget also includes one new police officer being added and then an open position from last year being filled. So, that includes the officer's salary, plus it includes training, uniform costs, weapons, all of that. So, it adds up. The good news is this budget has a forestry program that's been increased to $135,000, and part of that is this brush pickup that Gary mentioned earlier. So, that actually enhances the program. We have a new program that Chief Benowitz can talk about and has already come to you about, the red light camera enforcement program. It's sort of on hold right now because we're waiting for the county to take some action, but we're hopeful that they will take that action and the program will be added sometime in the next fiscal year. City Services has expanded the storm sewer maintenance program, a badly needed program. You'll see that if you go to that department, see the additional costs. You've got the new grounds maintenance contractual expenses, $75,000 in the general fund, another $75,000 is coming out of the Water and Sewer Fund. For the first time in quite a while, Community Development will have 100% of its positions filled, and there's also three interns that have been included. Unfortunately, legal expenditures in this budget are up 58%. Part of that is due to a rate increase, an hourly rate increase, the rest of it is just due to increased usage of legal services. So, that is of concern. We've got increases of overtime for both Police Department and City Services. As I mentioned before, the fund balance is about 9.2 months of operating, not horrible, but I don't think you want to go much lower than that. We do have some investment income increases because of those banking arrangements, and we've got some increases in uniform expenses. We did discuss with Alderman Wesley the use of the quartermaster system. However, I've been told that the contracts that are currently in effect with the unions don't provide for a quartermaster system. So, I think most people know that will save money, but since they weren't negotiated for, they're probably not possible at this time. We went through the personnel statistics at the last meeting. I wanted you to see what the changes were department by department, but overall, in the general fund, we're talking about an increase of two full-time employees. We're talking about an increase of four part-time employees. And essentially, when I say increase, I'm not talking about over any other level. What I'm saying is all the positions, with the exception of that one new police officer, were positions that have been budgeted before, but they weren't filled. So, there's one new police officer. The second one was already authorized, but was never filled. Okay. Here's your picture of what I was talking about, the revenue and the expenditures. You'll see the revenue line is, in 2007 and 2005 and '06, we were slightly over, but we had that building permit revenue coming in. Now, we're talking about it being a little tougher to achieve that, and then in 2008, '09, you see the expenditures pop up over the revenues. As I said, it's a common picture being repeated all over communities in the state and probably in the country. This probably shows a little better how the revenues are running. We had those bump ups with the building permits. We also threw some utility taxes in in the year '05, '06 to help the general fund. That was a temporary thing. Utility taxes are now all in the Capital Projects Fund, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. But right now, you can see the year we're currently in, which is 2008, and the year 2009, they're very close to each other. No big changes at all. Expenditures, right away, you can see how they've climbed up. Again, the union contracts, those increases, the corresponding pension and social security expense, that's what's doing it to this budget. And finally, there's your fund balance trends. Obviously, below the line is where we've got deficits, and we are budgeting deficits going forward. Keep in mind, though, with the exception of a few line items where we actually know what the cost is going to be in 2010, 2011, those are estimates based on the current year and the proposed budget year. So, they're not carved in stone. I do know for a fact, though, if we have like a contractual payment that we know is due in the year 2011, it's in there at the right amount. But in most cases, people have just increased things by around 3%, and that does give you the trend line, and that's kind of important in terms of policymaking. This is the picture again of the transfers that come in from the various funds. The arrow's pointing to the general fund, those are all funds coming in, and then you see the general fund spending, the $400,000 in equipment replacement and 150 in information technology. We will get to those other funds at the next budget meeting, and that's why we have to get the general fund set because everything plays off the general fund. If there's problems with the general fund, we can't complete the other funds. Here's probably the worst slide I had to do. This is the sales tax. You'll see the heyday for Wooddale was 2002, and it's going down and going down and going down. I gave you a handout about business licenses. I believe some of those businesses that were marked "sales tax producers" probably isn't correct, but I believe that there's some problems in the city with, not only with the whole business license effort, but with the businesses that are leaving town. The Building Department is still investigating about nine of that listing that I gave you. The rest of them, these are businesses that are operating, they just haven't paid yet, so they're going to receive some certified letters that are going to be mailed out tomorrow to get those people, at least to pay the business license fees and the penalties they owe. But what this tells you is that without some serious economic development, Wooddale's sales tax is not going to increase. There just is no way that it can take place because you don't have big areas where you can build big shopping centers, you know, have some great source of revenue, like the old days when I was in Oak Brook and we had the shopping center and we paid for everything. You don't have that. So, you have to pick your battles, and you have to think about economic development in terms of area by area, what you can do to bring in the right businesses to generate the sales tax.
Ms. Powers, so, '08, does this reflect the sales tax increase?
Very slightly, but that's only because we believe there's inflation in prices. So, it'll go, you know, I mean, cost of living goes up, your prices go up, so clearly your sales tax goes up. But...
This is not applicable to Home World Sales Tax.
No, no. Oh, no, it's not that. Regular sales tax.
Okay, that helps.
Oh, no. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No, and non-Home World does not belong in this fund, it's in the Capital Projects Fund. So, this is the regular municipal tax. Every community gets this. Everybody gets 1%. But what I'm telling you is, you'll see there's a slight bump up from '08 to '09, but that's really just due to inflation. That's all you're going to get. It's not very much. And of course, we don't know of any new businesses. I was perusing the list of business licenses to see what I could discover about new businesses. Instead, I found businesses leaving instead of coming in. So, that's just something, another thing to think about in terms of policy. Couple of things that are not in this budget that still need to be addressed. There were, I don't want to say commitments because I'm not sure of my ground here, but I believe representations were made to non-union employees at the time that many employees voted to, voted local 150 as their bargaining unit, that the city would treat the non-union employees at least as well as they treated the union employees. And of course, that's kind of open-ended because until you have the contract, you don't know what that's going to be. When we put these salary numbers together and gave them to the department heads, we did not put in the full cost of parity, but if the council would like to do that, it will cost a total of $12,000, and that includes the salary increase and the pension increase and the social security. So, that's it, a total of 12. At least then you will have achieved giving the non-union people the same that the union people have. Health insurance, we won't know probably for another couple of weeks, so I'm saying that could be plus or minus $20,000. We have a goodly amount in the budget right now, and I'm hoping we won't have to change it by $20,000, but I don't know yet. And then finally, the property tax levy. This will not be big dollars. This will be a difference of less than $100,000 when they finally advise me what levy has been approved. But still, I wanted you to know that we don't have everything carved in stone yet because it's a moving target. At this point, I guess maybe we could, I could take questions before we get into what we can do to fix this budget. Maybe that would help if everybody gets their questions answered, and then we can proceed because I've got three pages of things we can do.
Okay. Mr. Newsy, go ahead.
Maggie, on this forestry program that increased to 135,000, are we getting, is that money coming to us from Forest Preserve District or something, or?
No. No, Alderman Wesley, that's what Mr. Home was just talking about, this contract for the brush pickup, that $98,000 is going to be included in that 135,000.
Yeah, but where's this money coming from?
Comes from the general fund revenues.
It's not like it's revenue coming in or something.
No, no. This is an expenditure going out, the forestry. This is going out, 135,000. And when I said it was expanded, what I meant was it encompasses better service, better and more service to the residents, okay?
Right.
So, it's costing the city more, but we're giving more service to the residents.
Well, in the long run, it's almost going to be a wash for what we're moving our people around, right?
Well, yes, the contract compared to the people, but that's what I'm saying. When we expand a program or expand a service, it's usually based on council direction. You know, let's see if we can do this for the residents. And so, I point that out to you because I think the prior years, I can go to it, she'll just give me a moment, I think we only had like $40,000 budgeted for forestry. So, this is better. And this may also, I don't know, we have to ask Mr. Home, may include some tree replacement, too. I'm not sure of that, but there's more to forestry than just brush pickup. Yeah, see, in prior years, in fact, this current year, we only had $25,000 budgeted. So, this is an expansion.
And then on the same page, new grounds maintenance, $75,000 per year. What new grounds?
That's another one that Mr. Home presented to you, I think it was at the last committee or two committees ago.
It's for landscaping that we may contract out.
Yeah.
The mower long.
The agreement was to, exactly, the agreement was to split it between the water fund and the general fund.
Okay.
But we haven't even, I mean, it's in this year's budget, but we haven't gone, I mean, we haven't made our decision on that. We based it on our conversation that Mr. Home presented to us. We went by that to put this budget together. So, that is not even a cut and dry yet because we haven't even gone out for bid or anything with that yet. But we put it in there. I said, "Put it all in there, and we'll address it when it comes up."
Yeah, part of the staff's efforts here were to take anything that's come before you that appeared would be likely to come in. We're certainly not trying to take away the ability of the council to make the decisions, but it makes sense for us to put it on paper so you can see the effect it has overall because we don't want you to have to consider things in isolation. So, where we knew of numbers, we put them in, and it'll be the same in the other funds. When I show you the commuter lot, I'll show you the train station being paid for. Whether you decide on a train station or not, I'm at least going to give you the framework for it, and you can see where the funds are coming from and see what it does to the fund balance. So, just an approach.
Mr. Lewton.
Maggie, I called you this afternoon, and I asked you to find out the status of office, small offices, whether they're subject to the fee. Have you found that out?
Oh, I sent you an email within the hour after I spoke with you. Yes.
Oh, I had to leave the office for business. I'm sorry.
Well, let me quickly summarize what I found out because it's going to take some further investigation. I read the code book, went to the municipal code. From what I can see, there are no exemptions. I will tell you that Section 4.27 governs the fee that's imposed. Ordinarily, a business pays a business license fee based on its square footage. However, there are probably a page and a half of businesses listed who have specific fees attached to them. I'm guessing here, but it could be that when the ordinance was written, it was felt that some of these businesses either would have such vast square footage that the fee would be ridiculous, or on the other hand, they'd have such a small amount of square footage, they would pay $5. So, they came up with some minimum payments for some of these businesses. Having said that, I found no listing anywhere in the city clerk's office that says this type of business is exempt, or these types of businesses are covered. From what I read, and obviously I'm reading it just from the code book, I think we need to get the attorney involved if we've got some problems here. No, every business has to buy a license. They have to fill out an application, and they pay based on their square footage unless they're part of the specified listing.
Well, we know everybody doesn't pay because there are certain state laws that say the state has primary and only responsibility for taxing certain people, and nobody else can, nobody but the state can tax them. Beauty parlors, insurance agencies, only the state has authority to tax those people, and cities do not have authority to tax them. So, there are businesses that are preempted by state statute. For example, insurance agents, statute 215 ILCS 45-415 states that the state, the department, has the only authority to tax those people for licenses. Nobody else can tax them. And it's the same thing for beauty parlors, and there are other, sorry, there are other areas that are state mandated as the sole taxing body. I ask you also, you know, does it apply to small businesses, offices that are rented in the different locations like Georgetown and so forth where people have offices in there and they're doing telephone solicitation, you know, non-sales tax, you know, non-sales tax work? Are these people required to carry it, to carry insurance? And what about people who work out of their home, home businesses? Are they required to carry a license?
Mr. Mert.
Of course, Alderman Lewton, you stole my thunder. Everybody here knows that state law supersedes local municipality law. So, I've talked to Alderman Wesley, and we've already taken the initiative to check with the city attorney. Ms. Powers was simply citing our city code, and of course, Illinois statutes supersede local statutes, so.
Right, and I think that because there was some confusion within the city clerk's office, this was a good time to have this question brought up so we can have it clarified. First of all, I think every business who moves into Wooddale might call up the clerk's office and say, "Am I exempt, or am I subject to this license?" And it would be a good thing for the people who answer the phone to know exactly which businesses come under the business license ordinance. And secondly, we'd like to compile a list of who's in and who's out. I don't think that's been done in a long time. So, it was a good, it was a good exercise for me, although our office doesn't handle it at all. It's strictly a clerk's function. It was good when you asked me, then I read the code section and began to investigate and talk with the clerk and the deputy clerk and found out that seems to be some gray area.
So, they're not firm on their beliefs?
Not at all, no.
We're waiting for the attorney's reply then.
Did you ask, specifically, I asked for people who rent small spaces, you know, under 1,100 square feet in offices for the purpose of conducting a business like an accountant, like a telephone solicitation service, or truck routing people, or, like I said, the people like in, if I walked down the hallway in Georgetown, I would see probably about 10 different businesses that have no retail tax component. I mean...
Oh, it has nothing to do with retail sales tax. The business license has nothing to do with retail sales tax at all. That's not one of the criteria. That's what I said. I've gone through the entire code section. Now, it's up to an attorney to interpret how Wooddale's been applying the business license ordinance that it's got on the books. I'm not an attorney, I can't give you that opinion. I read the entire ordinance. I do not find any exemptions anywhere. The only specified businesses are those who pay a different fee than the one calculated based on square footage. That's it. That's all that's in the ordinance.
Is there a minimum fee cost for?
No, because of the specified, they've specified certain businesses, as I said, I'm guessing because either they're too small or too vast to be able to calculate based on square footage. So, they default to like a $65 fee, things like that. But if you look at that code section, I looked it up on our website because it's the quickest to find the most current, it's really all over the map what businesses get charged.
Okay.
And it's not a permit, it's actually a business, a license to do business in Wooddale. So, it's people with a location in Wooddale.
In their home, too?
Doesn't say anything about a home.
So, then people in their home with a home business are subject to the fee?
We don't know that yet. We're waiting for an attorney to check into that.
It's a legal question. I can't...
It's all turned over to, I turned it over to Jeff to call Mr. Pat Bond for a legal opinion on that. We do not know. We asked him to relook at our code to verify which direction we are supposed to go. Believe me, if there is a ruling by Mr. Pat Bond saying that these people do owe us for business license, except oversee the state statute, yes, we are going to go after those people to get our business license back because that's money in our pocket that we're losing.
I agree with you, but I just think there's a great deal of lack of knowledge about this, not just among the staff, but among the people who have businesses in Wooddale. I think there are a lot of small businesses.
Well, we just need to, we need to get back out there and educate, but until we got the final decision and who's, I don't want to start banging on these businesses unless we got the legal opinion if we are entitled to it. We don't want to get these businesses uproar. Yes, you always might. I think what we should do is now wait until the legal opinion comes back from Mr. Pat Bond after visiting the ordinance, which you translated something, and he may translate it different, and take from there. I don't think we should jump on a bandwagon right now on this until we get our legal opinion on this.
And agreeing with you, I would say further that a lot of these people are absolutely naive to the 10th degree about fees. So, I think if we do do this, and it turns out that people owe them that are completely oblivious to their even existence, that we should not charge them any fines, that we should just ask for the fee. As it is, they'll come up in less than a year for their new fee anyway. Can we get a commitment to waive fines on people who basically have an excuse ignorance?
Perhaps we should stop beating the dead horse tonight. The mayor's not here, so nobody here is an attorney that I know of, so I think it'd be better if we wait for the attorney to get this information before we make any rash decisions.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anything on the general fund that anyone cared to address? You guys pretty much went through it. Any concerns? Staff is here to answer them if we have any. The only thing that I, and I noticed that it's in the last slide there, Maggie. To tell you the truth, the other reason why we are in a little deficit here, too, is because the Home Rule Sales Tax is not coming in as big as we thought it was going to be for this year, unless some numbers change overnight.
No.
The non-Home World Sales Tax is going into Capital Projects Fund.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not in here, and actually, it's coming in just as, exactly the way we predicted it.
Oh, okay.
Because we.
Before it wasn't, when we had our meeting.
Oh, no, it was.
Okay.
Non-home rule, but we're talking about regular sales tax now. That's where we're finding the, the difference. Okay.
I have one other question. Go ahead.
Well, you got, well, you have the slide up, Maggie. On the Dial-A-Ride, that 42,000, so I've been asking for alternative solutions. If we get, do we have those, or are we just?
You mean for the tourism fund, or for the Dial-A-Ride program?
For the, right.
Okay.
A couple of months ago, staff gave a council report on a couple of different scenarios with Dial-A-Ride. It was council's direction to pursue the scenario of trying to advertise using the tourism tax with hotels on the vans and to speak to PACE to see if that was legal, one. And two, after we found out if it was legal, if hotels wanted to even do that, we passed the first step of PACE has authorized it, but we're presently in discussions with local hotels to see if this is plausible.
Because I, I spoke to you before the meeting, actually, Maggie, and that one line showed $4,200 in revenue.
For the pull tabs?
No, for the senior, is that busing?
Oh, that's the fees. Those are the fees that are charged for the rides. Okay? That's all the revenue we take in.
That's what we collect for the rides. So we're collecting $4,200.
Yeah, and it costs us about $46,000 to run it.
We're spending $42,000.
No, that's just for the drivers. Then we got to rent the van. Then we got to put gas in it. And we have to fix the van. So it's being subsidized probably close to $46,000, $48,000.
And the alternatives, I don't remember. I know we were looking into alternatives like cab vouchers, the county, and all these other things, but.
Well, there were, there were lots of.
Everything seems to be dead.
Yeah, there were lots of different options, but none of them were quite as good as the Dial-A-Ride, from what I understand from various council members who talked to ridership. But I think when I gave that presentation, I think we were paying something like, it was costing the city $15 or $16 per one-way ride to move people around to their doctor's appointments and whatever.
Yeah, and at the time of the original discussion, we actually distributed a survey to all the Dial-A-Ride riders, and they expressed their preference to, you know, keep the Dial-A-Ride. And at that time, you know, council agreed that we wanted to look into the tourism dollars as a way to fund the project. We can certainly go back and reexamine those other.
Well, I think we agreed to, to look at it, but the other options really never came forward where, where you guys gave us the dollar amount saying, "This is what it's going to cost."
I think we did give the dollar amount. Council that time said, "Look into, look into the hotel issue." So we can go back and reexamine that if you want.
Then I'm mistaken. I just don't remember those numbers. Where it's, you know, it was going to cost this much if we did the cab vouchers, and it's going to cost as much.
I believe the most expensive option was the option you chose.
According to this memo, this is dated August 17. For instance, if somebody wanted to go to Alexian Brothers on a taxi, this is through American Taxi, the one-way cost would be $9.10. So our cost is 15 or 16 one-way. So we had saved right there. Universal Taxi, they charge $2 when you get in the cab, $1.80 for the first mile, and then $1.80 for each additional mile. So a trip from City Hall to Alexian Brothers would be $10.10 one-way. We charge $3 per trip, and people can pick up a book of 10 for $18, which gives them $1.80 per ride, which is a really good deal. And Addison charges all riders $3 per trip for their, they have a bus, right, or do they have a van? They have a van.
That's the township, right?
That's township, yes. I believe the feedback from the riders in Wooddale was that this wasn't as convenient because it didn't run as often.
You have to call like a day ahead of time or something like that.
Right, that's right. So, so the reason why we put this in the budget was because council direction was, we want that program. We're not, we're not, don't want to get rid of it. And no one showed any enthusiasm for all these other options. So it's in there. It can be taken out. And what I'm telling you, and I didn't get to it yet, but one of the ways we can reduce this deficit is by taking $42,631 out of the general fund and putting it in as a tourism fund expense if the hotels agree to this advertising program, which is in process. I mean, there, there has to be, according to the statute, the tourism fund has to be, funds have to be used to promote tourism. If the hotels were on board with this, then I guess the theory is it would be promoting tourism.
Right.
You know? But without that, it's kind of hard to link moving people within Wooddale to tourism.
Okay. Maggie, I have one question before we get into this one.
Okay.
On, on the slides show the three interns for the community development.
Yes, and they're on a professional services line. They're not in salaries.
I understand that, but these three interns were if we move forward with the project that is, that we talked about.
I believe one intern is typical every summer. The remaining two interns are for the new program.
But we don't even know, as a council, we have not even decided if we going with that program yet.
Yeah, council direction was to bring it up again at budget time because you thought it was a decent idea, and at this time, then you decided.
Oh, right, but, but now, do we have the dollar amount, what it would cost to have those two interns? That hasn't been presented to us yet?
I believe we do.
No, they don't, they didn't. They were supposed to go back and work the numbers and tell us what it was actually going to cost us.
There's $8,000 in the budget under professional services.
For, for these interns.
For these three interns.
So $8,000?
Yep.
I don't remember seeing that.
You'll see because it's, it's going to come up, because I'm saying take it out if you need to. No, you had eight. You have your three interns on.
I mean, because I don't think we made a commitment to that program yet. I thought we were waiting for the, some dollar amount come back, what it would cost to launch that program. And there was some issues that had to be addressed with that program. Am I, am I missing, or was I correct, or correct me if I'm wrong, guys? But I thought that was.
Okay. Mr. Noah has shown me that he had 20 in there. I just want to check to see that I've got the right amount on his professional service line. Yeah, the right total is there, so I don't know where I got that. Maybe, maybe I was thinking that was one intern that you could eliminate because you needed two for the new program. It came up at our meeting, Alderman Wesley, last week when we were, when we were going through looking for ways to pare down this deficit.
That was a meeting that I wasn't part of, then, because I don't remember talking about, about that.
It was just on my list of things, modifications to make that, that people brought up.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
If we start out at the top, Gary Holmes did research whether or not the part of the salaries from the street division could be paid for out of motor fuel tax funds. If you'll recall, in the last couple of years, we've used motor fuel tax funds to make transfers to the capital projects fund to help pay for roadways construction. We've also paid for some street equipment leases through the motor fuel tax fund, but we're getting close to the, the end of those leases now. And this idea would actually take a permanent $230,000 out of general fund and take it out of motor fuel tax to pay for these street salaries. That looks like it won't hurt the, the motor fuel tax fund. It's very easy for a motor fuel tax to audit this and approve it as opposed to when we, you know, when we rent things, or when we go back and do roadway projects. There's a lot of hoops you have to jump through, Mr. Holmes said. We were audited by MFT almost a year ago. They still don't even know when we'll get those audit results, and they were auditing the time period from the year 2000 through 2006. So this would make it much easier. You can show them payroll records. You can show them time cards. You can show them total salaries, and they can approve it. So that's, that's one idea, and that, that makes a real good start at reducing this deficit. I believe there's, there is excessive overtime in the budget. And the two departments that generate most of it are the police department and the city services department. But I think we probably should revisit those numbers for each, each department so that we get a better number for overtime. And Brad Wilson has gone through and looked at the overtime in both city services and the police department for the last five years. And he's looked at the current year-to-date, and he sees a big variance. So it could be that this is just a mistake that was given to us, but in any event, I think, I think overtime can come down, at least 20, maybe even 50. I believe Chief, Chief Benowitz is going to talk to you about the red light camera revenue. This is a program that he had hoped would start this current fiscal year. And I guess there's a slight chance it might start this year, but really, it's been held up at the committee level with the DuPage County Commissioners. And so while Wooddale is behind doing it, we don't know when it will start. It's all set up to go, but we don't have the permission yet to go forward. So this will be a source of revenue, and I suppose it, maybe it will end up as big as the administrative fee for impounded vehicles. But it should be a healthy source of revenue once all is said and done. And also, police fines, we've studied those for the last few years. And Alderman Wesley, you and I talked about this, that we think that we'll probably do better with police fines because year-to-date, we're already over $45,000. And we're only at the middle of February for this year, so we think they'll, they'll go up. We were asked to put this on as far as the conference expenses. I guess this is a good time to hand out the, the training matrix to all of you. And then Lisa Jepson is here to talk about how Wooddale comes up with education and training. But Brad has these copies. We've got one for every department in the general fund. I know there's been discussion in the past about conferences and whether they're worthwhile and why they're needed. But I think if you take these training matrices home and study them, you'll see how many people in the city have to have continuing education in order to, to keep their various certifications and licenses. And sometimes, those are offered at annual conferences. Other times, they're just offered in classes that you can attend locally or even do on the internet. The main thing is that, that once people have become certified or licensed, or both, if they don't keep up their professional credentials, then they have to sort of start over, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And Lisa will show you how many people in the city that actually have licenses and/or certifications, what kind of degrees people have. Wooddale's got a pretty intelligent, educated workforce. And these, these conferences allow certainly department heads and sometimes assistants to network with others of their peers and get some time-saving ideas and maybe hear some new thoughts on a new way to, to solve problems. So they are, they are somewhat useful. They tend to be not held in your backyard. Usually, a conference is going to be away from your home. Maybe every 10 years, it'll be held in the city where you live. So anyhow, these, this, I'm giving you a breakdown, and I'm breaking it down. Education and training, which is a separate line item in the budget, from conferences, which is another expense. It's towards the end of all the worksheets. So you can see what they are by department and then what they are in total.
Maggie, I have one question for you. This is pretty much exactly what I asked for. I mean, I think this will lighten up the council a lot with who needs it for continuing ed and all that other stuff. But the one drawback I have on this proposal here is some departments did exactly what we asked them to, but then I have other departments that did not do what we asked them to do. You know, everyone, there's a couple of them that did the hotel expense, the registration fees, and, and all that costs. But then there's a couple of departments that didn't do anything, and they put unknown where the classes are going to be. I would think that if, if some of these classes are coming up, that those are planned years, almost a year out. I mean, you can't tell me they just put these classes out and send out a flyer in the classes next week. I mean, some of these classes might have been done last year. We could go by what the cost of those classes were, ballpark figure. So I mean, there, I, I think this is a good start, but I would ask that these departments that did not complete this the, the way that I thought we were going to complete this, that we discussed in our budget thing, that we go back and have them redo that section. Because I'll tell you, some of these classes, you know, I know they need them for continuing ed. I have no problem improving the education of our, our employees here. But, yeah, they better know where those classes are and how much. You know?
Well, we can, we can ask the departments to provide more details, Alderman Wesley. It's my understanding that in some cases, the departments don't know where the conferences are going to be. And maybe that's just going to take some more digging to find the answer to that. I know myself, professional organizations that I belong to, they have their conferences set up at least five to 10 years in advance. I mean, I, and, and we could call the GFOA this afternoon and ask them where the conference in 2011 is going to be, and they'll even tell us what hotels.
Normally, they give you a list.
Yeah, because they have to, because to, to lock in the rates and to get the speaker schedule and all that, it's, when you belong to any national organizations, they have to plan five to 10 years out. So I, I guess we, we need to do a little more work, and it may be just that the, the exact type of conference hasn't been determined. And that's why we don't have all the, all the information. But I do think everybody made best efforts here to give you some idea of, of who has to go, what they're going to be studying, and why they go to it.
And they did.
Yeah.
And I did.
And whether it's local or whether it's out of town.
And, and, and they very well did. But I mean, if, if we're going, the way I look at it, if you're going to do the package and we ask everyone to do it the correct way, I like the whole package done all at once. That's my only opinion. So I mean, I, I'm not against, believe me, I'm not against sending people to conferences to learn and bring back knowledge. I have no problem that. So, I mean, it's going to be the council's decision if we try to balance a budget in, in some way here. I guess some of these classes may be repeat. I don't know. You know, so.
I've got a question. I'm hearing that we might train somebody in public works or streets and sanitation, whatever, become an arborist or, or whatnot. When we send these guys to classes, and let's say we're spending $10,000, $15,000 on these guys to become certified, is the city protected? These guys have, once they become certified, all of a sudden, now they become more valuable. Somebody can just come in, scoop this guy up, and offer him an extra $5,000. Is the city protected on recouping some of that, those fees that we paid out for him to become certified?
My understanding that these certifications are job requirements. If you're referring to tuition reimbursement, then we are covered. But for these job requirements, that these employees need to be certified, that's, I mean, there's, I don't believe there's any protection on that. Because we're requiring them to do it. For tuition reimbursement, that's their prerogative. But if we require somebody to do something, I mean, it's, it's us requiring them.
Right, but let's say we spend $15,000 on somebody to become an arborist. We can't require them to at least stay with us for the next two years, or no, huh?
Wait, wait, may I interrupt for that question? I thought we had that agreement. If, if, if we send him schooling to not, I mean, to not qualify him, but he wants to go to class, and he wants to acknowledge himself, he must complete at least one year here, or else he needs to reimburse us for that course. I thought that was a.
That's true, but that's the tuition reimbursement program. That has nothing to do with this.
Is that what you're referring to?
Nothing to do with this at all.
But that's what I think he's going for.
Right, that's what you're talking about. The education and training and the certification Jeff is talking about has to do with, we tell somebody, "We want you to be a certified water treatment operator," okay? And, and the person goes and becomes certified. It's basically our expense because it was our demand on the employee, okay? And that's no different than teaching somebody how to use Microsoft Office. If, if you train them, or I'm going to be teaching everybody how to use Springbrook. Well, hopefully, they all stay, but there's no guarantee, and there's no way you could make somebody who is learning something as part of the condition of their employment to then have to pledge themselves to you for a particular period of time so you can recoup your, your investment. It doesn't work that way. But in tuition reimbursement, where people are saying, "I'm going after a degree in whatever, and, and I would appreciate the, the city helping me," that's different. If they don't stay, then they pay back.
Right.
So it's different.
Also, on the tuition reimbursement, it's a sliding scale, so the lower your grade, the low, the less amount we reimburse. the low, the less amount we reimburse.
Right.
Christine, will you?
Thank you. It, as a portion of this effort, I, I think what we need to do, Mr. Mermin, can you tell us for your department heads, what you're mandating that you want them to be certified in? Because we have varying certifications from like thirteen to, you know, I don't know how many. And I would look to you to, to set the bar on that as well, as well as like, you know, any kind of state mandated certifications that they need to be in that position. But I would like to know what the bar is for each department head.
Well, I can certainly look into that for ones that are applicable, but I can tell you, a majority of these are most likely, you know, requirements already, not by Wood Dale, but by state or federal laws.
Continue education.
So, but I'll look at, at whatever ones I can.
Okay, because the, the priority would be the ones that are mandated by state. And then if there's extra ones, then we will look at those and decide if that's something that, that we want or not. Thank you.
Well, this might be a good time for us to have Lisa just talk about the education and training that's included in the budget from the standpoint of the makeup of the employees. Because while I, I understand what, what Alderman Winger is asking for, I think different communities have different commitments to levels of excellence. And some communities put a great deal of emphasis on people constantly improving themselves. And others say, "We want you to meet your minimum standard." And other ones say, "Well, will you meet, you can do more than your minimum if we can afford it." And there's all different ways to do this. But it has to do with, with the municipal culture, whether or not you value people becoming trained and becoming more proficient and more valuable to the community or not. So I'm not, not sure that it will always matter if every single person is required. For instance, I have licenses as a CPA, as a certified financial planner. Wood Dale doesn't pay for any of those things. I take care of that. I would lose my license and I would lose professional standing if I don't do a hundred and twenty hours of education. I know that. And I've known that for thirty years, so I do it. But that has to do with my commitment to excellence. That has to do with me saying, "I think it's important to be certified and licensed." There are other people who, who might only do it if they're forced to do it and meet the minimum rather than go beyond that. And I, I think we can probably break down, and I, I know most of the departments have already said, if somebody needs one and a half continuing education units or they need fifteen per year, that's what's required to keep the current certifications they have. And that is completely separate than the tuition reimbursement program, which is essentially saying to people, "Better yourselves and you'll better Wood Dale through your efforts." So they are completely and totally separate and we, we did not want to put the tuition...